Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by a roll call vote an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Tuesday, January 9th, 2018, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion debated and seconded. Please call the board.
Mr. Ebert is absent today. Ms. Ponder?
Aye.
Ms. Hoxton?
Aye.
Ms. Harge?
Aye.
Secretary votes aye. Dr. Graves?
Aye.
Mr. Chabot?
Aye.
Alright, at this time, there's going to be a video of, a short video of district highlights and successes.
All across the Ferguson-Florissant School District, students are experiencing success. All three high schools in the Ferguson-Florissant School District received the Safe Sports School Award from the National Athletic Trainers Association. The high schools in the district have demonstrated what it means to work hard, play hard, and be safe. The NATA recognizes secondary schools around the country that take the crucial steps to keep their athletes free from injuries. Congratulations to all McClure-South Berkeley students who have been accepted to college. So far, thirty-two out of one hundred and eight seniors have already been accepted into college for the fall semester of 2018. MSB Administration and staff are striving for one hundred percent of this year's graduating class to be accepted to college. Christmas came early for students at Parker Row Elementary School. Parker Row collaborated with Shield of Hope, a nonprofit charitable organization that is dedicated to the welfare of law enforcement officers at St. Louis, to purchase gifts at Target for some of the school's students. This is the second year Parker Row has been selected for this opportunity. Vaux Elementary has implemented a building-wide math intervention block. Third and fifth grade classes are specifically using peer-assisted learning strategies, or PALS, which is a supplemental peer tutoring program in which student pairs perform a structured set of math activities. Students take turns acting as tutors, coaching, and correcting one another as they work through problems during these peer tutoring sessions. Coaching sheets are provided for the students to prompt their partners, thinking and internalizing the mathematical processes. The process is prompting students who normally would not have been a peer helper or coach to be very successful in helping other students. And Vaux's latest star benchmark scores for November 2017 reflect students that are achieving at high levels thanks to PALS. These scores reflect students that are at advanced and proficient levels in math. First grade, forty-six percent; second grade, forty-two percent; third grade, fifty-eight percent; fourth grade, thirty-eight percent; fifth grade, thirty-two percent; and sixth grade, ten percent. You can learn more about these and other examples of the great learning in our schools on our website and social media.
Thank you. The next item is the portion of this meeting is allocated to show a short video from the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of interest to board members and to the community.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the search for Missouri's new Commissioner of Education. During a special conference call on December 14th, the State Board of Education voted five to three to start accepting applications for the position of Commissioner of Education on December 15th and close applications on January 8th, one day before the next regular meeting of the State Board of Education. The five members who voted for the accelerated timeline for accepting applications were all the recent appointees of Governor Greitens. State Board President Charlie Shields, Vice President Vic Lenz, and Member Mike Jones voted against the motion and argued for a longer timeline and a more deliberate search process. Lenz said during the conference call, "Closing the application process on January 8th does not allow enough time for the State Board to get adequate input on the search."
I would tell you it's a slap in the face to educators, it's a slap in the face to legislators, it's a slap in the face to executives over at the Governor's Office if you ask for the application to go out without having gotten their input before you do it, before you start the process even. It just doesn't make sense. It's not the way you would do a high-level application for a high-level job.
All five of the recent appointees to the State Board of Education still face confirmation by the Missouri Senate when it convenes for its 2018 session. Senators from both parties have expressed concerns about the apparent attempt by Governor Greitens to orchestrate the firing of former Commissioner Margie Van Deven on December 1st, putting those confirmations in jeopardy. The 2018 session of the General Assembly is upon us, and numerous education issues will once again be on the agenda for lawmakers, not the least of which is state funding for K-12 education. It will take a $98 million increase in the foundation formula to fully fund the basic state aid program for schools. Forty-eight million dollars of that would go toward new early childhood education funding, triggered by a fully-funded formula. MSBA Associate Executive Director for Advocacy, Mike Reed, says the budget will be challenging once again this year.
There are going to be a lot of demands on the budget. A number of places are going to be asking for increases in money, plus the fact that halfway through this year, this fiscal year, we have a tax decrease coming in. So there's a real question on how much funds will be available for the Chairman of the House Budget Committee and the Senate Budget Committee to work with. There'll be a lot more demands than we have appropriations available. And so that's going to be a really, really big topic for much of the year of, where is the money going to come from and how are we going to split it up?
Other issues likely to be considered once again in the General Assembly are expansion of charter schools throughout the state and voucher schemes such as education savings accounts that funnel public money to private schools that are not accountable to the public. MSBA will keep you informed about legislative developments during the session through our weekly Legislative Voice newsletter, our Capital Watch video program, our daily updates on Twitter, and through Critical Issue Alerts. And be sure to mark your calendar for the MSBA Legislative Forum Public Schools Day at the Capitol, scheduled for February 13th in Jefferson City. You can register for that event through the MSBA website. School Board members throughout the state will be honored for their work during School Board Recognition Week, January 21st through 27th. It's a great opportunity for communities to honor local school board members who provide leadership to our local school districts throughout the state. Check the MSBA website for resources related to School Board Recognition Week. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
This portion of the meeting is allocated for the board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to the board members and to the community. First up was Mr. Ebert. He's not here tonight. He did not give me a report. Do you have anything, Dr. Hoxton?
Okay.
Alright, yeah, you'll be up at the podium later, so. Alright, so we'll move over to Ms. Ponder.
I have the talent management portion, but I don't have any updates for this month, seeing as how we just got back. But I just wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year and wish everybody good luck for the rest of the school year. We're going back for break, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Ms. Hoxton?
Good evening and Happy New Year to everybody. I have just recently changed jobs, and the only reason I'm mentioning this is that I am now at a nursing home in front of Duchesne Elementary School. And at Christmas time, they brought down the fifth and sixth grade orchestra class to play for my residents, and then the kindergarten class came and sang. And they happened to sing my favorite Christmas carol, which is "Mary Did You Know." And I have never seen kindergartners able to sing like that. And I was so impressed with the music director. It was just a fantastic program, and of course, the residents loved it. So we are partnering with them. We're going to do something for Martin Luther King Day next week, and then we're also doing some other things for Black History Month, and we're doing some Olympic things. So we're looking forward to Duchesne being our home. So just throwing that one out there. I have the report on the Facilities Department, and the floors will be completed by the end of next week for the second and third floor. And we also have saved quite a bit of money. In over five years, we will save $103,000 just on changing and replacing LED lights. And of course, that gives us brighter sight for all of the students. So that's another one of Terry's great projects, and we appreciate that very much. They have also been working during winter break on plumbing, painting, and HVAC projects. And then, of course, last Sunday night, there was a little water that got into Ferguson Middle, and his team worked all night, I think, on that building. And so we were able to be up and running, so thank you very much for that. Then in the Industrial Technology section, they have been working on the steam phone for the steam school and for the administration floors, as well as AT&amp;T circuit moves that have been put into the building. And I found this very interesting. They have done an overall technology survey, I guess you want to say, on their services. And everyone that they have served since July 1st has given them a 91.7 satisfaction feedback, so I think that's great. So I want to thank both of you for this call. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Harge?
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. My thing is on community engagement stakeholders. In December, Home and Elementary School partnered with Patheon, a company who donated new and gently-used item toys for kids and families during the holiday season. Also in December, the Florist South Berkeley students in the child development class had a great day of reading. Students sponsored a reading day with the families of the future Bulldogs, the Florissant-Ferguson School District preschoolers. The day was filled with storytime snacks and short stories, and the students, families, and the community. Our district is supporting the American Heart Association by participating in National Wear Red Day on February 2nd. Some of the funds raised come back to support physical education and other healthy opportunities for students in our schools. All staff members, support staff, maintenance, and food service are encouraged to participate in Wear the Red on February 2nd. Halls Ferry Elementary is partnering with Snooks Market at Cross Keys for Bags for My Calls Initiative. During the month of February, Cross Keys Snooks will donate $1 for every reusable giving bag sold to Halls Ferry Elementary. And this is a great opportunity for the community to support Halls Ferry. We don't know how much the bags are, but more information will be coming out. You'll hear about it in February for the Snooks Cross Keys. Remember, the district website for the fercfloor.org is your location to find out information. And it's a good parent portal. Just make sure, parents make sure that your information is updated. And this is also good for your child's education. We have a lot of information on that portal, and also, we're also on Facebook and Twitter as well. And these are just some of the ways that Ferguson-Florissant School District is building connections with our stakeholders and to all our students. Thank you.
Dr. Ponder?
Happy New Year, everyone. My portion of the strategic plan is decorum in the schools. During November-December training sessions on decorum with the district, we focused on strategies to help staff deal with students that were acting out. And according to best research, the best research out there on student behavior, students go through several different phases, or can go through some of these phases, prior to acting out. Part of this whole training session is to help teachers to deal with students and to recognize some of the behaviors that may trigger some other behaviors so that they're just aware of. Like, for example, there's seven phases that research shows that teachers should look for. And it's like the calm phase, and that's when students are calm. That's the best time to deal with them, when they're in a calm demeanor. Triggers, school triggers, there are many things. It could be negative interaction with the teacher. It could have been coming in from home, having a bad day with mom and dad, not being able to get the keys to the car, whatever it is. A change in a daily schedule, arguments with peers. And for teachers to recognize those triggers. And sometimes, those triggers manifest in other behaviors, and we need to just make sure that we understand where the behavior is coming from. And then agitation. By the time it gets to that point, you know, students are unfocused. They're doing things like tapping their hands, or moving around, or agitating other people. And then acceleration, and that's when it really gets to the point where they're acting out, questioning, arguing, 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 and refusing to work or committing minor misbehaviors. And then when it peaks out, it comes to where the behavior is clearly out of control. Then de-escalation, bringing the student down, and then recovery. How do we then go back and help the student to get back to that calm place? And so this is just a training to help, again, to assist our teachers in helping students with their behaviors and having them to recognize what those triggers might be. I did talk with Gary Bills about the discipline referral rates to this date. And the only thing that we're seeing right now is that it's going down slowly. There's a lot of things that we still need to work on. And so we are happy with the direction that it's going in. We'll give you more information and more data later on as the school year goes on. Just wanted to say too, on personal note, I was out at our last board meeting, and I've got some medical issues. I am going to have surgery, so I'll be out for a little bit. So just wanted to let the community know. I'm not gone anywhere. I'll be back. Just pray for me, and just know that I'm here in spirit. And also want to say thank you to the board for their continued support. Thank you so much.
Dr. Graves?
My portion of the strategic plan of student achievement. Once again, I just still want to thank the Communications Department because they did my portion very well this evening when they showed us the success of our students. So I really like that we are able to see what's going on inside of our schools. Students received their report cards this week and over the break, so make sure that you have your Tyler account so you can check what your students' grades are. Ernest Young invited the McClure College Math Program scholars to their offices for some Christmas fun that included lunch games and buckets of cookies, apparently. The Ernest Young College Math Program connects 23 McClure students with mentors to help them get to and through college. So just continue, as our district continues to focus on making sure that our students are college-ready. And I hope you're going to talk a little bit more about this, Dr. Davis, because I don't have all the details. But I know in December, stakeholders met, as well as one student, and administration to discuss exactly what type of student that we would like Ferguson-Florissant to basically be the product of in the district. So hopefully, he'll talk a little bit about that. You know I've got to throw you one parable for the New Year. So that's all I have. Thank you.
So, Happy New Year as well. It's been really nice and quiet. As you can see on the agenda tonight, it's probably the shortest meeting that I have ever experienced, so hallelujah. So since our big meeting at McClure-South Berkeley back in December about the districts focusing on restructuring, redistricting, resizing, whatever word, we're still in the early stages. It's probably the questions that I get asked the most out in the community. Dr. Davis and I met with a teacher at Central a few days ago. Right now, there's really no new information. Dr. Davis may have something. I don't know. But we're still, you know, we want to be as transparent as possible. There's been no movement, no meetings planned, other than the one I had with that one teacher. But, you know, feel free to reach out to us. I know some of the community have been sending emails out. We're all engaged. We've got seven board members. We don't always think alike. We don't always vote alike. But we do equally listen to the community, so we want to hear from everybody as we move forward. So that's all I have. So, Dr. Davis. Oh, FFNEA will not be reporting tonight. They already had a prior engagement, and since it was a very short agenda, they just didn't want to add to it, I guess. So, but she apologizes, and she'll be back in February. So, Dr. Davis.
Good, Happy New Year. I was going to say good evening, but Happy New Year, everybody. So we have, this is certainly School Board Appreciation Month, week in January. And we do this every year, recognizing our board. I think it's really important to recognize our board. And so we have some gifts, and what I'd like to do is call each board member. As I call your name, I'd like for you to come front and center, and I'll read your plaque. And we want to get a picture and post this on it. This is a part of the shared images of success. But on behalf of the administration, on behalf of our employees, and our community, the work you do is really important. You know that. And it's not easy work. It's messy work, and it gets really hard. And we don't always agree on everything. You don't have to, right? It's about the work for children. And I think at the end of the day, each of you believes in the work about educating children well. I never take it personal, you know, and I think it's important to say that publicly, how important it is for the public to know how invested you all are in educating our children in this community really well. So with that, we want to say thank you for your service on the board and your continued service on the board, and that you'll keep doing the work that's best for all children, irrespective of their race, creed, or color, zip code. It's about all children getting educated well. So with that, the plaque reads, first I'll call it Mr. Robert Chabot, if you will come forward. It's on behalf of our district, Ferguson-Florissant R2 Board of Education. Mr. Chabot, we thank you for your dedicated leadership in public education and your continued service to the children of this community. Let's give Mr. Chabot a round of applause. Okay, and then we'll get a good picture or a hug. Awesome. And we have some candy for you also. Alright, thank you. Thank you so much. Next, I'd like to call up Dr. Courtney Graves. Dr. Graves? Dr. Graves, on behalf of the Ferguson-Florissant School District, we'd like to thank you for your continued and dedicated service to the children of our community and for your leadership of education. So thank you. I also have a nice flower for you, so. You got candy. Awesome. Oh, she gets some coches. She does get candy. Wow. This is small. Next is Dr. Donna Pauline Thurman. Let's give her a round this year. So, Dr. Thurman, thank you. On behalf of the FERC floor, R2 School District, we thank you for your dedicated leadership in public education and your continued service to the children of this community. Thank you. Great. Let me get you your little gifts here. It's a nice flower. And some roselstover. Next is Mrs. Constance Harge. Ms. Harge?
I'm the shy one.
So, Ms. Harge, we, on behalf of the FERC floor School District, we thank you for your dedicated leadership in public education and your continued service to the children of this community. Thank you. Awesome. I'll give you these gifts for you. So you're getting a piece of some candy on the way home?
Thank you.
This is Leslie Hoxton. Ms. Hoxton, on behalf of the FERC floor School District, we thank you for your dedicated leadership. And I thought I'd call you Dr. Pauline.
Yeah, okay.
You've been with the board for quite a long time. And so we thank you for your continued service to public education and to the children of this community. So thank you so much.
Of course, my favorite color. I have math. Okay, thank you.
This is Jessica Ponder. Ms. Ponder, thank you for your dedicated leadership in public education and also for your continued service. And though you didn't know it, you've been here a long time, serving the children of our community. Thank you so much. And here's your words. So, Mr., you have this, yeah, so let me just read it because he would be able to be here tonight, but we still want to recognize how he worked. So Scott. We thank him for his dedicated leadership in public education and his continued service to the children of our community. And we all know how passionate Scotty is, so let's give him a round of applause. Alright, I have a couple more items. Yeah, so one of the things that Dr. Graves was referring to, and I wanted to give you a little bit of information. We'll have more as the semester goes on. But we have a committee that is working on what we call a profile of a graduate. And we had a really good meeting, I think it was December 18th it was, it was on a Monday evening, I think it was, back in December, right before the holiday. And we put together a committee of about thirty people, parents, community, colleges, universities, we had representatives from Wash U, from UMSO, just a cross-section of people from the community. And the focus was on, and it's going to continue to be on, building a graduate profile. And what that does is it specifically, if you go to profileofagraduate.org, you can get a whole lot of great information. And essentially, what we're after is building a profile of the kind of student that we're trying to build here in Ferguson-Florissant that will be ready for 21st century, you know, have the 21st century skills, whether it be they all be go to college, or to the military.
military, or to work, whatever they do, we want them to have the kind of skills they need to be successful in the world. And so we will be meeting at least one more time, if not two. We looked at a lot of different things, for example, specifically the cognitive skills we want students to have, the kind of thinking skills, kind of what we call an interpersonal, I-N-T-E-R, and that is working with other people, collaborating, teamwork, and also the intrapersonal skill, I-N-T-R-A. And those are skills like perseverance, grit, stick with itness, so that when you come up against a struggle, you learn how to grapple with that problem productively. And that failure is not bad. I mean, failure is good in a way that it gives students opportunities to grow from that experience so that they become better. So with that, we'll have another meeting in this semester, and we'll be bringing to the board a recommendation later on in the semester that presents a profile of a graduate. Before we do that, though, once we get a draft, we'll put that draft out to everybody, and everyone will be able to read through it, provide comments. We'll also have a list of all the people, that includes teachers, that includes, we only had one student that showed up that night, and so it's my personal mission, as I was at schools even just yesterday, to make sure we get more students involved, because I need student voice. And I expected to have more, because we invited, but sometimes things happen with students. But we did have at least one student, Jeremiah was, Jessiah was with us, so I will get it, Jessiah, except. So he was with us and really contributed well, but we had quite a few folks, and we'll bring that to the, once the committee comes away with the draft, we'll put that draft out there for comment. And so everybody will be able to take a look at that, provide comment, feedback, will consider that, and then ultimately, the committee will bring a recommendation to the board. And I'll ask that entire committee, but those who can't be here, to come, then I will make the recommendation, and I expect it to be in the latter parts of this semester. The last thing I have is, I want to give an update a little bit about some of the work we're doing when it comes to redistricting, resizing, restructuring. So, on December 4th, when we met with the community, we were talking specifically about the timeline, and we're building that out. One of the things we said on December 4th was, we would need to do a building assessment of every one of our facilities, and get some really good data that I could give to the board, so that as they make decisions about what redistricting looks like, what resizing looks like, that data's there. Terry and Laura have done a great work since that meeting at getting as much information as we could. We've got quite a bit of information on, from, you know, a couple of different sources, but in particular from engineering firms that talks about that building assessment system. You know, so we've gotten a quote that's come back way more than what we thought it would be. I knew it would be a pretty hefty quote, but, you know, with that, we have to go through a process of bidding it out, right? But ultimately, what we'll do is bring that to the board, likely in February, if we can get the RFP out and get some proposals back for those who want to bid on it. But specifically, what it will focus on is looking at all of our facilities, looking at the site conditions, looking at the educational suitability of each one of our buildings, looking at the technology infrastructure, and to really determine what the needs are at each school, so as the board decides what happens with that redistricting and restructuring, that they have that data. So, once we get that back, then we'll be able to have some definite dates, more so, because we need to have that data in front of everybody, so it makes sense when we have community meetings, that we can give community some solid updates with hard numbers, think good thinking about restructuring. Hope that makes sense. That's all I have, Mr. Chabot.
Thank you very much. This portion of the meeting allows stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board or are requested to speak from the podium, please identify yourselves, and in keeping with district policies 4054, 4059, and personnel law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, I, as the board president, may make clarified remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any misstatements or facts. So, we have just one tonight, this is Ms. Randazzo.
Hey, good evening, I'm Carolyn Randazzo, and on behalf of Metropolitan Congregations United, I just want to thank Dr. Davis and Mrs. Ponder from the board for attending our community assembly that we had back in November, and Mr. Beals, I don't know if he's here tonight, okay? He represented the district on the stage to, so we could celebrate the improvements that have been made in the reduction of out-of-school suspensions, which of course is part of our campaign to break the school prison pipeline. And so I just wanted to express our appreciation for the support our district is giving our initiative and the hard work that's being done in our district to keep our kids in class where they can learn with the campaign continues, and you'll be hearing more from us, and there will be meetings more about that. But I just wanted to say thank you for attending the community assembly. Thank you.
The three-year terms of Ferguson Florissant School Board members, Dr. Courtney Graves and Mr. Scott Ebert, are to expire in April this year. Declarations of candidacy may be picked up at the office of the superintendent at 10051 for Drive, Florissant, Missouri. Under Missouri law, the first date to file as a candidate was on Tuesday, December the 12th, and the filing will close at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January the 16th. All other filings will occur between the hours of 7:30 and 4:00 on days when the district office is open. The annual election for the school board is Tuesday, April the 3rd. A person who wishes to be, to file for candidacy for the Board of Education must be a citizen of the United States, at least 24 years old, a resident taxpayer of the school district, and a resident of the state of Missouri for at least one year. In addition, the candidate must follow these procedures. They must file a declaration of candidacy, line up for the filing which was already done. Currently, my understanding is Dr. Courtney Graves has filed to retain her seat, as well as Mr. Ebert. So, I don't know if there's anybody else here that's interested in pursuing this. Wonderful job. All right.
Wonderful thing.
Yeah. All right, that's all. Down to the consent agenda. Madam Secretary, would you please read the disbursements?
Yes. Payroll, teacher and non-teacher, eight million. Eight million, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, fifty-seven dollars and nine cents. Operational disbursements, one million, seven hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-six cents, with a total of ten million, six hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion debated and seconded by? You pick one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any or none? Motion passed. All right, this is our only agenda item for the night, it's the most important one. Ms. Modruzik said she's probably got a good hour and a half on this, so.
Good evening, board, and Happy Anniversary, or Happy Anniversary, Happy New Year. And Happy New Year to the good. I am very excited, this is the first time I've been able to be first on the agenda. I usually last, so it's really kind of a nice experience.
You both.
Yeah. First and last. So, but actually Carlton Brooks, our Director of Finance, is the person that coordinated our audit this year. He came in last January, so he came in halfway through the year last year. However, he did an awesome job with our audit and doing the coordinating and working with the auditors, and so I'm going to turn this agenda item over to Carlton and our representative from.
Sure.
Thank you, Laura. Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Davis. As Laura's mentioned, we're going to be talking about the audit, and we have a representative on hand. And looking specifically at the agenda on this item, the agenda states that the annual audit of the district's financial operation for fiscal year 2016-17 has been completed by our certified public accounting firm, Shaw Walter and Jabari P.C. The board has received a copy of the examination of the financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2017, and a representative is here, as Laura's mentioned. We've got the President of Shaw Walter and Jabari, Mr. James Torrey, Jim Torrey, who is present, and he's going to, he's present to address any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, and good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I just have a very short presentation of the summary of the audit results. Now, your financial statements are prepared on the modified cash basis of accounting, which is a basis of accounting other than generally accepted accounting principles. On page one of the financial statements, you will find our independent auditor's report. In that report, we give our opinion on the financial statements. Our opinion is that the Debt Service Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, and the remaining fund information are fairly presented in all material respects on the modified cash basis of accounting. Regarding the general and special revenue funds, except for the effect on the financial statements for the district recording an expense in the 2017 financial statements for its portion of state retirement plan expenses, which were not paid until July, these funds are also fairly presented in all material respects on the modified cash basis of accounting. With regard to federal and state reporting, we noted two instances of deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that we were required to report, and we noted no findings over compliance and internal control that are required to be reported related to your federal work programs. In addition to the financial statements, the audit report, we also issued a report on internal control-related matters and advisory comments. In this report, we have communicated to the board the deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that I just mentioned, along with other suggestions for improving internal control and operating efficiency. In addition, we have provided an update as to the status of the findings from the prior year. We have also issued a report titled "Report to the Board of Education," which includes all the required communication from the auditor to the board at the conclusion of the audit. So finally, I would like to thank Dr. Davis, Ms. Modruzik, and their staff, and the many courtesies extended to us during the audit, and at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I move we accept the report.
Second. Motion debated, seconded. Do you have any questions?
It's always difficult when you hear efficiency in a report. And can you, I mean, how does that affect us overall, or is that, I know that you've given suggestions on how to?
It did not affect our opinion on the financial statements. However, they are, there are two deficiencies that we feel strongly about that should be remedied immediately, and in the report, management has put their plan in for corrective actions, and there are honestly two pretty easy fixes. I believe part of the problem was there were some issues with some health problems in the finance department, which caused some delays in performing some of the normal functions. So again, the remedies are not difficult, it's a matter of having continuity of staff and time to do those, and we'll be glad to, if needed, we'll be glad to work with management to try to help them solve those. But they are, they are definitely a couple of items that need to be, you know, taken care of immediately.
And you all feel that it can be taken care of pretty easy? I understand you're walking orders.
Yes, we do. We have, actually, as Mr. Torrey has mentioned, we have an action plan in place to address those issues.
Any other questions? Any or none? All in favor of approving the report? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any or none? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, may I have a motion to adjourn the open session and return to closed session? Motion debated and seconded. Please call the board.
Yeah. Ms. Ponder?
Aye.
Are you sure? No, I'm sorry. Ms. Hogshead?
Aye.
Ms. Harge? Secretary votes aye. Dr. Graves?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Enjoy the rest of the evening.